Meeting is ordered at 6:04. Praise for the pledge.
Pledge and concurrence. The Lord is with us, the Lord is with us, the Lord is with us, the Lord is with us.
Mary, roll call, please.
Matthew Buckley.
Here.
Michelle Geiser.
Here.
Michael Williams-Horner.
Here.
Patricia Kaminski.
Here.
Mary Goett.
Here.
Susan Zelsner.
Here.
Jonathan Broder.
Here.
Thank you. Exits are to your left, right, and behind us. Item 2.1, review and approval of board agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the board agenda for tonight? Motion, please. John, second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We point on reports and presentations. Arrow.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Good morning, evening, community. I have one very brief presentation tonight, and then a second one that's a little bit longer. The first presentation is on the school tax levy, which is on the agenda for tonight, and the next one is on the reopening of schools. So when the Board of Education did the school budget last year, they reviewed... Good evening, Board of Education members. Good morning, evening, community. I have one very brief presentation tonight, and then a second one that's a little bit longer. The first presentation is on the school tax levy, which is on the agenda for tonight, and the next one is on the reopening of schools. So when the Board of Education did the school budget last year, they reviewed all of our different revenues. We collect money from a variety. It's not just the tax levy and the tax effect on the taxpayers. The tax levy is $16.9 million. We also receive $7.4 million of state aid. We do use fund balance of $2.4 million. We have reserves, $230,000 from there, and we have interest earnings revenue of $45,000, which brings our total budget to $27.1 million. The tax rate itself, the Board worked very hard last year in looking at our programs and our expenditures and our income to really make sure that there was no impact on the taxpayer for the upcoming school year. Due to the pandemic, they wanted to really make sure that people could knew, would have a steady tax rate on their home. So the assessed value tax rate, you'll see, is exactly the same at $161.68. That is a 0% tax rate increase. Community member would see a change would be if the homeowner made improvements to their home, if there is a change in the star reimbursement, or a homeowner had a raising or lowering of their assessed value. Other than that, the school tax bill itself would be exactly the same. So what does that look like? There's no increase. There's no total increase per $1,000 tax rate. So on a home that is 30,000, has a $30,000, which I think is our average, or is it 40? 30. Their tax bill would be $4,850.25. Are there any questions from the board members about the tax levy that's on the agenda tonight? Thank you very much to the board members and to Anne LaRoe and the business office for putting the effort into making this budget what it was and ensuring that there was no impact to the taxpayer. That was job well done to all. And now what I know everybody is most eager, and if you're out there watching, what you're out there watching for, the reopening information for the 21-22 school year. So in planning for the 21-22 school year, we had several considerations as we planned. One is the academic and social-emotional effects of the last 16 months of school, especially on those students who were remote and have literally not stepped in the building since March of 2020. Additionally, we would be remiss if we did not take into consideration the rising COVID numbers, both regionally and locally. Further, we have to look at the guidance. So just a brief, and this is just guidance for this summer. The CDC has issued guidance on July 9th, August 4th, and August 5th. The New York State DOH guidance on 7/7 issued guidance, but then said that they would be sending a second set of guidance prior to the start of school, but they have not done so. In fact, in early August, they sent out a statement that they will not be releasing guidance. Therefore, in lieu of the Department of Health issuing guidance, the New York State Education Department issued guidance on August 12th. However, all that did was really echo the CDC's guidance. There was nothing new in there. Then, when Governor Hochul was sworn in on the 24th of August, just a few days ago, she stated that the Department of Health guidance will be forthcoming and that it will include a mask mandate, vaccination, or testing for all of school staff, and that she assures that access to testing will be available and convenient for all. So all of those things were in our minds as we planned the school year, and as I said in my email to the community this afternoon, we've been planning all summer for this, but it has evolved and changed throughout the summer, within the past few weeks, and even this week. And even today, we got new guidance from the Orange County Department of Health that we have to adjust to and work with. So it's ever-changing, just as it's been the past 20 months. Additionally, the legal counsel and the district liability insurance companies have weighed in and basically have said that to minimize district liability, districts really do need to follow the CDC guidance. Otherwise, we could be held, potentially be held liable if someone were to become sick because we did not follow the guidance. So the real question for parents out there especially is how does that apply to my child? So in terms of instructional shifts this year, the directive from the state and national education departments, as well as the Health Department and the CDC is very clear. Bring all students in for in-person instruction and then add mitigating supports from there. Mitigating is not the right word. I will think of the right word. Full remote choice will no longer be offered. However, if there is a concern about the medical fragility of an individual student, parents should reach out to the PPS department by calling the district phone number and dialing extension 32350. In terms of the in-school day, we have separated into two different categories. There is a K-5 category and there is a 6-8 category. The K-5 category, in general, those students are not eligible for the vaccine. In 6-8, all of the students are vaccine-eligible. And we really consider that as a huge factor in terms of how we plan the day. So in K through 5, students will be assigned into homerooms. They will remain in the classroom for all core content areas, but will travel for specials, lunch, recess, project lead the way, et cetera. In 3 through 5, in the past, as many of you know, we were departmentalized for reading, writing, and math. However, for 21-22, due to the pandemic and looking to continue to reduce both staff and student exposure, we will continue to limit our full departmentalization structure. Each homeroom class will have two teachers providing instruction during the day. We will revisit the departmentalization as the pandemic declines, as vaccines become available for this age of students, as well as for the next school year. So we will continue to revisit this topic because I know that departmentalization is something that has a lot of support among the community specifically. In grades 6 through 8, students will rotate classes throughout the day, as they have traditionally in the past. The next question that comes up is what if my child is quarantined or isolated? So one of the things that we know, particularly as it applies to the elementary K-6 student, is that remote instruction is not what is best for students. Students learn best and teachers teach best when it is in-person in the classroom. It's also not ideal for teachers' teaching methods to teach both in-person students and remote students at the same time, nor is it really for the class as a whole the most beneficial. Kids are easily distracted, and we believe we can come up with a better system, and so we've been working on doing just that. So what would that look like? For K through 6, students that are quarantined or isolated at home will be given at-home work and assignments, including instructional software assignments. They will receive one hour of live, one-on-one, or small group remote instruction each day they are out while they are out. This will be conducted by a certified teacher, and the curriculum will echo that which is being taught in the classroom. It will be the teacher and all of the students that are online will be at home. There will not be any in-school students in that group. Upon return to school, the students will receive an additional hour of before or after school in-person instructional support for each day they weren't in school due to quarantine. Again, the curriculum will target that which was taught while they were out with the goal of seamless transition back into the classroom. So basically, if I am out for a total of five days, I would receive an hour each day that I am out, and then when I'm back, I would receive an additional five hours of one-on-one support in person with my teacher. Or a teacher, a certified teacher. That has familiarity with my grade level. In grades 7 through 8, it's a little bit different. Those students are more self-sufficient at home, are able to pay attention more at home, so that we plan to have the students livestream into their courses during the day, as well as be given at-home assignments. Just a couple of notes here. The exception to this, obviously, if the child is sick and they're home isolated because they actually have COVID and they're sick with symptoms and they can't do work that day, we certainly understand that, and they will not be expected to log in. To be marked present for that day, the students would simply need to participate in the one-hour live remote instruction session. Are there any questions or anything from the board to this slide yet? Pausing. Okay, I'll keep going. So then the next question that often comes up is what if the whole class is quarantined or if the school has to close? Well, the answer to that is, just like we did last year, we will develop closed remote schedules, and these schedules will be communicated by the end of September to all families. I have had some...
What happens to related services if those are quarantined? Do they make it up and leave back?
So I believe that what we will do for that is we will hand it on a case-by-case basis, specific to the child, the family, and the service, to see what best needs the needs of that individual student, just like their IEP would. We would do the same thing.
So if the child was an IEP, that one-hour remote would be certified special ed teacher?
It would probably be combined between special ed and the regular ed. Between a special ed certified teacher and a regular ed certified teacher. I did have the question today that came up during administrative meetings, when would the school close? And the answer to that is, if you remember, last year, they asked us to close after holidays. We did that for the first one, and then when we found that there really was no effect on cases around the school, we did not continue that, and I do not intend on continuing in that this school year either. You also may remember that in either late January or early February, we had a very quick increase in number of cases in the school. I believe we had five to seven cases in like a two-to-three-day period, and we weren't sure kind of what was happening. So we closed the school for a few days just to get everything clean, make sure everything, make sure there was no spread, and then we reopened as quickly as possible. The other possibility is if we were directed to close by the Department of Health. Additional shifts in the reopening plan for student seating. Student seating in general, as prescribed by the CDC, will be three feet apart. Hallway movement, we will be teaching students to stay to the right of the hallway. We are going to at least start the year with a one-way hallway traffic up in the 6th through 8th grade wing at the middle school only, just to again alleviate that face-to-face congregation of students. Clubs, we plan for clubs to occur at both the elementary school and the middle school this year. Sports, we will continue to offer sports within the guidelines. The NISFA and Section 9 have sent out requirements for sports, and a lot of them are specific to indoor sports versus outdoor sports. I am pleased to say that spectators are allowed, whether they're indoor or outdoor, but there are rules associated with each, and that we will follow those rules. In terms of bathrooms, last year, we had a one-student-per-bathroom rule. This year, the rule will be the number of stalls equals the number of students. So if there are three stalls, there will be three students allowed in at a time. The kids were really able to monitor and manage that on their own, but of course, we'll revisit that and support that initiative as needed. Health surveys and screenings, the health surveys and screenings are no longer required. However, we still ask that parents check their children before sending them to school and keep them home if they are exhibiting any symptoms consistent with COVID. Though we are not doing screenings, we did feel it important to still take temperatures on the way into the building. So all individuals, students, staff, everybody that come into the building, we will be taking their temperature as they enter the building. John?
I have a question regarding, I know last year when students were entered the bus, they also had their temperature taken. Does that happen again? Sure, just when they enter the school.
So it's going to just be when they enter the school. We don't have the bus monitors in place this year, so it'll just be when they come into school. Yep. Good question. Districts are no longer to submit the daily number to the state COVID report card. So you may note that, remember that I sent out emails last year saying you can refer to their report card to see our numbers daily. As of right now, and my answer to any question I've ever asked about COVID or our protocols is as of this date at this time. But as of today, districts are no longer submitting the daily number to the state COVID report card. In terms of buildings and grounds, we will have the same cleaning and full sanitization protocols as last year. We will be paying extra special attention to high-touch surfaces such as railings, doorknobs, et cetera, throughout the day, playground equipment, kids are outside, et cetera. Another question we've had a lot of discussion about is community use. Our outdoor community and facilities will be available for community use. Indoors during the evenings, we really need to make sure that all of our spaces are properly cleaned and sanitized each day. Therefore, we do not plan to offer evening community use. And that's during the week. We will have, we are however, planning district-sponsored evening events, such as back-to-school night, PTSA meetings, events, STEM fair, et cetera. We have created the 12-month wall calendar that we have always done in the past, up until last year. Mary's been hard at work on that for several weeks now, occasionally bringing it into me and mark it up together. But we are planning a full year of events, but the caveat is, is that as we are planning this, but everything is going to be practicing patience and flexibility. If we can do it, great. We may have to adjust how we do it, or the way we do it, or when we do it, but we did plan a full calendar of events. So that calendar is coming out to everybody, and we'll share the details about each event specifically as they arrive. In terms of indoor community use on Friday nights and for weekends, we will be, those will be considered on a case-by-case basis. There are not children in school the next day that we would need to prepare for, so something like the cafeteria could potentially be used. I know the Boy Scouts had their blue and gold dinner here every year. That is something we could consider having, and the space could be safely cleaned and sanitized prior to students coming in on Monday. Cafeteria and recess. In the cafeteria, breakfast and lunch will again be served. We will be maximizing the distance between students. There will be a minimum of three feet and a maximum of six feet between students. Students will be assigned seats for contact tracing purposes. However, they will be able to choose where they sit and have opportunities to change occasionally during the school year. So yes, students, you will be able to sit next to your friends from class at lunch and recess. Depending on the number of students quarantined down the road, the classes may have to rotate use of the cafeteria versus lunch in another spot in order to get to the six-foot of distancing, so there's a minimum amount of students quarantined. That's something we're just not going to know who the Department of Health quarantines until we actually get to that scenario, and we will adjust accordingly. Again, our goal is as many kids in person as often as possible the entire school year. Recession, we are going to return to full-grade level outside recess and not have the zones where each class had to be in their own zone every day. They will all be outside and able to play with each other. On the school bus, masks will be required by the CDC, are required still by the CDC on all public transportation, and that includes school buses. We will return to regularly scheduled bus loads. However, the focus will be on keeping families and neighborhoods in close to proximity, so there will be assigned seating on the bus. There has always been assigned seatings on the bus, but we will now load from the front, from the back forward, so that students aren't crossing. We will also continue to have the added mitigation strategy of open windows and hatches throughout the bus ride. Further, we are continuing that students can only ride their regular bus or have a change specific to childcare reasons. We are not doing social visit changes on the bus. The parent would need to come pick them up if they're going to a friend's house after school. So how are we going to know who is a first contact and who must quarantine? And this is one of the updates that we got from the Orange County Department of Health today. So individuals who are within six feet of a COVID-19 positive individual for a cumulative total of 15 minutes, last year it was 10 minutes, so a cumulative total of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period will be identified as a first contact. So there's two changes within that statement. One is the 15 minutes instead of 10 minutes. The second change there is that it's now over a 24-period. It's not just 10 minutes at once. So we have to pay special attention to that. First contacts must quarantine for 10 days from the date of last exposure, unless the individual is vaccinated. So if you are vaccinated, you do not need to quarantine. However, if you develop symptoms, quarantine is then mandated. The individual is within three months of a COVID diagnosis. So if you've had COVID for three months after you've had COVID, you are also exempt from the quarantine rule. Or, and this is specific to students, you are exempt from the quarantine rule if you are a student who was seating three feet from the affected individual, and both students were wearing well-fitted masks correctly and consistently. All individuals identified as first contacts will be notified along with their quarantine requirement status. So even if you don't have, even if you, we know that you had COVID within the last three months, but you're a first contact, we will still call you and let you know that you're a first contact, but that you do not need to quarantine. So parents, please be assured that if your child is a first contact, we will notify you. I do want to make it clear that the Department of Health for Orange County has made it very clear that the entire class would be quarantined for each case within the classroom if the students are not masked. That does not help us meet the goal of getting as many students in-person for in-person instruction as often as possible throughout the school year. So with masking, again, our goal is keep as many students in-person as much as possible. So when making this decision, these were the considerations. One is the health and safety of all students and staff. Two, the potential for liability if we do not follow the CDC guidance. Three, Governor Hochul has indicated that a mask mandate is forthcoming. And again, as I said earlier, the Department of Health has indicated that if districts do not mandate masks, they will quarantine the entire class. If we were to implement parent choice, that would mean that one student is masked and another one may not be, then they both would need to quarantine. That is one parent making a choice for another person's child, and that for me is not an option. Every parent is able to make decisions for their own child, but not other people's children. Therefore, all individuals, regardless of vaccination status, will be required to be masked when indoors, on school grounds, and on buses. Adults that are meeting with other adults who are all vaccinated may choose to remove their masks. Masks will not be required outside for any individuals. I'm going to pause for board.
Any comments?
Anything? Yep.
I'd like to ask one question. I'm just going to touch upon it after. What would be the procedures moving forward here if we've got non-COVID circumstances? With children, you'd have a little heart, you say?
So I do have a slide on that. Yep. Yep. Mask breaks will occur. The principals will work with staff to create protocols for mask breaks. We will have them outdoors as much as possible. We will create groups for mask breaks, where students taking a break at the same time are more than six feet apart, so that students in that three feet are never unmasked at the same time. Small individual minute breaks will be allowed, but monitored to ensure individuals within three feet are not taking a break at the same time. I do want to say that there is hope. On July 7th, the New York State Department of Health, when the rates were very low, put out a rule that students in classrooms, masks were recommended but not mandated, and that vaccinated adults did not need to mask. It is my sincere hope that we can get to that point again this school year. It was our hope that we would be able to enter the school year with that rule, and this is one of the things that has had to change and evolve over the summer. I would like to see that happen again, but it is very clear that that's going to be tied to the rates of infection regionally. Vaccination status, I've talked about that briefly. The Greenwood Lake School District will provide an avenue for individuals to provide proof of vaccination status. Students and families can send a copy of their vaccination card into the school nurse. Staff will give a copy of their card to Teresa Finn. This is another one of the rules that's as of August 26th, because we do believe that's changing. Reporting the vaccination status to the district will not be mandatory. However, to qualify to not have quarantine, vaccination status will need to be proven. If the vaccination information is not provided, the individual must be treated as an unvaccinated individual and would be quarantined. So it is your choice as a parent whether to tell us whether your child is vaccinated or not. It is your choice as a staff member whether to tell us you're vaccinated or not, but you need to know that notifying us each of the following paths apply. I will say that Governor Hochul has indicated that mandatory vaccination or frequent testing of all school staff mandate is coming, and I recommend that all staff begin preparing for this now. Returning to school medical notes. So if a student has a COVID diagnosis or isolation, in order to return to school, it must be at least 10 days from the onset of symptoms. A doctor's note is required to return to school, and there must be Department of Health clearance. Ooh, that was fast. If a student is quarantined after exposure, whether at school or at home, they can return to school 10 days after the date of exposure, and they must be cleared by the Department of Health. If a student is sent home with symptoms, or the parent keeps the child homesick with COVID-like symptoms, then they must, they cannot return until they have a doctor's note diagnosing them with something other than COVID and indicating a return-to-school date. So that answers your question, and that is, all of this is mandated by the Department of Health. Aaron?
So the COVID symptoms, I will rattle off as many as I can, but pretty much, if you feel sick, it's a symptom compatible with COVID. It's sneezing, coughing, headache, fever, stuffy nose, runny nose, upset stomach.
Is there anything that's...
Close your seat.
If you stay homesick, you need a note to come back to school. Yes. And that is the Department of Health rule.
I have a question for you. So can that, can you get clearance from the school nurse, or do you have to get it from your doctor? Because I know last year that was an issue with copays.
So it was, it has to be a doctor, it cannot be the school nurse, but there is also a rule that they cannot charge copays for COVID-related, and all the individual has... and all the individual has to do is contact their insurance company or have that with their doc, and then there's no charge, there is no copay. Initially, there was that copay, but then they created that rule.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Who's going to monitor that?
What? This part? The school nurses, Nurse Penya and Nurse LaRoche and the principals monitor all of that. And our nurses did a stellar job last year, and I know we'll continue to do a stellar job this year. But that is a lot of their day, calling parents, saying, "You need a doctor's note, you need this, you need this." Also, when the person is diagnosed or if they are a first contact, I send personally, send every single individual parent an email with all the steps they need to take, and I will continue to do that.
I'm worried about the COVID diagnosis. I'm worried about when a child has a cold or allergies. Who's going to say, "Even seasoning 50 times, you have to go take a cold test?"
So we are not saying they have to take a COVID test. We are saying they need a doctor's note to clear them. And the nurse does that. The nurse calls the parent and says, "We need to come pick up your child. They are sneezing profusely in the classroom. We need a note before they can return." And the doctor may send a note saying they have seasonal allergies and they are allergic to grass, which is very high right now, and they can return to school. And that's fine. If we already have that documented from the parent, that they have that allergy and it is allergy season, that is the reason, then they don't get sent home. So this, just so everyone knows, this is exactly the same protocol that was in place last year. There is nothing new about this aspect. Layered mitigation strategies. So this is going to just be the statement, and this is the phrase I was trying to think of earlier in my presentation, what the district will do. So we will have many mitigation strategies in place. We have the MRF-13 ventilation that is consistent in all of our buildings. Hand washing, we'll continue to encourage hand washing throughout the day. We will have hand sanitizer in every classroom and every space and readily available. Our cleaning and sanitization protocols are increased. We also have additional temporary staff within the custodial unit to support that. We will be conducting contact tracing. We will be having seating assignment charts and making sure that we know who has been. So we will have a contact tracing system in place. We'll be very mindful of the physical distancing, especially the three-foot rule, and we will have masks in place. As families, what can you do? We ask that you make sure that you keep your child home if they are exhibiting any symptoms of COVID-19. If eligible, we highly recommend that you get vaccinated or that your child get vaccinated. If you are providing a mask for your child, it must be fitted to their face. Ones that are hanging or too loose will not be acceptable. As was the case last year, we have plenty of masks to hand out to all staff members and students. We are not asking that anyone provide their own mask. We have them and are ready to supply them for anyone that wants it or needs it. Other questions or comments from the board?
I'm sorry. I'm just making this statement, it's a personal statement, it's not reflective of the board. I just find it very frustrating, honestly. I think that, you know, we haven't really gotten any scientific evidence on the efficacy of masks. You know, the WHO, and I'm going to quote the WHO actually on their statement, you know, "We put it on when the kids are doing physical activity." And it says, exactly from the WHO, "People should not wear masks when exercising, as masks may reduce the ability to breathe comfortably. Sweat can make the mask become wet more quickly, which makes it difficult to breathe, promote the growth of microorganisms. The important preventative measure during exercises is maintain physical distance of at least one meter from others." We don't know the long term. There have never been any studies on the long-term effects of masks. We don't know the mental impact that it's having on students. I think it's unfair that the Department of Health is penalizing us for wanting to have parental choice. As far as vaccinations go, it's very conflicting guidance that an asymptomatic vaccinated person can remain in the school. And someone who is asymptomatic that's unvaccinated has to quarantine. I feel that's a punishment, especially for the children of lower grades who are ineligible for the vaccine. That is just my personal comment on it. I felt it just needed to get off my chest. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. 4.1, privilege of the floor. I'm going to read two statements before we open that up. This is a special business meeting that allows for public comment. The public comment is typically only on the agenda for the regular monthly business meeting, not special meetings. Tonight's meeting is a special meeting. We are making an exception to this general rule for the meeting for the following specific reason. This meeting is specific to responding, reopening of the school for 2021, and parents and community members may wish to share their ideas, opinions, or reflections on that plan that could influence the final implementation of said plan. Feedback, comments, questions tonight can be related to tonight's agenda or presentation. No other topics will be allowed. I'm also going to read our Board of Education Policy 1510. Public expression at meetings. Public expression at such meetings shall be encouraged, and specific portion of the agenda shall be provided for the privilege of the floor. At its discretion, the board may invite visitors to its meetings and participate in the board's discussion on matters of the agenda. The following guidelines are intended to promote an orderly procedure for such participation. The following guidelines are intended to promote an orderly procedure for such participation. I said that. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board regarding the items of interest and concern during the privilege of the floor section of each monthly regular board meeting. Anyone wishing to be heard will be asked to address the president of the board and be recognized prior to speaking. Speakers will be asked to give their name prior to addressing their question or statement to the board. Speakers may be limited to three minutes each for their comments or questions. Speakers are to have the right to speak without interruption. Comments regarding specific personnel will be ruled out of order and referred to the superintendent. Speakers will not be recognized for a second time until all who wish to speak have been given an opportunity. The board will suspend privilege of the floor if it is determined that continued discussion of a particular topic will prevent the board from completing its scheduled business or if one of the above guidelines are not adhered to, and continued participation is deemed to be disruptive. I'm now going to open to privilege of the floor. Beth? Yes?
Sure. Okay. So I just have a couple of questions and comments. My first one is, how do we ensure during mask breaks that our children are actually getting mask breaks? Last year, there was several, several teachers, classrooms, where they were not getting mask breaks at all. And I know this for a fact, my son was one of them who did not get a mask break and was told he had to wear it all day. And he got yelled at throughout the six hours to bring his mask up above his face. So when we talk about patients among everybody within the school, faculty, students, staff, whoever, it may be, I accept, everyone has patients with their children who were wearing a mask for six hours and to keep it above their nose for six hours. There is not a faculty here that sits in their office for six hours with the mask above their nose. But then yet, we're asking our children to do the same. And my son, who got yelled at repeatedly in his classroom to make sure it was above his nose, and did not get a mask break. And that was not just with him, that was with several classrooms, from 4th to 8th. It's unsettling as a parent. You spoke just like this, though, that I don't have a choice. That's highly offensive to me, that I do not have a choice for my own child. That my choice, that I do not want my son to wear a mask, is somehow offensive to the person next to him who chooses not to wear one. It's offensive. It's offensive, and I should have a right for my child. And that's being taken away from me and everybody else, who I believe feels the same way. And as through 4th to 8th grade, like even the 8th graders getting yelled at, they're getting yelled at for not putting their mask on. From a teacher who's vaccinated. So how does that make sense? They're vaccinated, they're protected against my child who is not. But then yet being yelled at because he does not have his mask above his nose for six hours. Maybe he's lucky, whoever teacher that they get will give them a 10-minute mask break. It's not okay, it's not fair. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Anyone else?
Hi. So I'm just curious about the testing, the weekly testing, with the high number of group cases, a month unvaccinated. I'm assuming that we're all going to be tested, are you? Question?
Is it right now? No.
What does that mean? We're not all going to be tested?
Only if you're not vaccinated. It's not mandated yet, but that's where it's going.
What does it mean? Say again?
It's not mandated yet, but it will be soon.
So then the next thing I have is just a request. I would like to request that our flags be lowered to half-mass in honor of the Marines who gave their lives to the enemy. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Anyone else? Tani?
I have two questions. One is the three-foot rule with the kids in the cafeteria. They're not going to mask, so they're going to eat it. Is that going to cause, like, a large selection of kids to have to be quarantined? Is there a system in place for if that turns out to be the case? Like, wouldn't, I mean, I know that it's going to sit together, but wouldn't six of you better, that you have the mask up and eat? My second is, is it possible to revisit the known school use for eating? Kids have already had a year of that inactive day. There was these whole practices in the winter. There was CYO, which had a mess all last year. There were different physical activities that the kids were able to do in school. I mean, this was looking for. There's no good place sanitizing later on in the day. The next morning, and I always see the civilians out here, assuming that that's just a time thing for the parents to, let's say, I know you said about the weekend, and that is, you know, sounding more like the community gatherings as opposed to physical activity that kids really need. Is it possible that that can happen?
I would say as long as everything's going well. We're going to revisit all this as we go on. You know, obviously, we all want to be open completely.
I mean, it is a consideration for the kids, that they need that out. There really is a lot.
We all agree with that.
Also, I agree with everybody just.
Thank you, Tani. Anyone else? Please.
I can issue a response to some of the items and statements from this evening, from public statements. I do not have answers for all of them right now. The first one about ensuring mask breaks, I would ask that parents let me know if their child is not getting a mask break so that we can address it internally, because we did ask. I will say that there are some teachers that have, just as students have medical, there are teachers that have medical concerns and issues, and that one of the accommodations provided to them, that a mask break would not happen during their class period, just for that one period. To hear that there were students that went an entire day without a mask break does concern me, and I wish that I had known that last year. So please, if you have a question as a parent, I am here. I know you have my email address, not just you, Kristen, but everyone out there. I call parents, and I always said, "You have my email address." And they say, "You send enough emails, I've got your email address." So please, if, we can't fix things that we don't know about. So please let us know, but we are planning on having mask breaks. The weekly testing question, are we all going to be tested? I have not seen the mandate yet from Governor Hochul. Whatever she says, we have to do, we have to do, and we will go from there. One thing that I responded to, another staff amendment I acquired, is that I have no intent to exceed the state requirements whenever they come out, but we will have to follow the state requirements and the state mandates. And the third thing, the question that I can address this evening is the rate of quarantine out of the cafeteria. So I know that one thing all the students want is as much of a return to normalcy as possible. That includes eating in the cafeteria with their friends. So what I asked of the principals, and Mr. Kamar is here, and he can attest to this, that they're working on this, is to take all the cafeteria, figure out our biggest class, which in this school is the 8th grade class, and figure out how many of them, to fit all of them in, how far apart can they be? And then from there, all the other classes will fit in. So it's really like, they probably will not be three feet. It's more likely that they will be four, five feet somewhere in there to be, that they'll be seated. In the classes where there's a lot less, so for example, our incoming 4th grade has very few, it's almost, it's not quite half, but it's almost there of the size of the 8th grade class, they will be able to be more spread out. Because of the rules of quarantining, we do expect that the only quarantines, we're hoping, right? We got to wait and see, kind of see what happens, and we have to wait and see what the Department of Health decides in terms of the quarantining. But it's our understanding right now that really the only quarantines are going to come out of the cafeteria, and maybe the bus. And I know Mr. Mackey's here as well, and Rob's here for the custodial, but whatever. So yes, we will have to quarantine in the cafeteria. We're going to form a six-foot circle around the individual, and we're going to lay out the cafeteria the best we can to minimize that. If we are finding, and I think I had this on a slide, if we are finding that we are quarantining an exorbitant amount of kids in the cafeteria, we will set up a secondary space so they can be farther apart, so less kids are quarantined. But I want to give all kids the chance to come back to the cafeteria to start the year, if we can, and then adjust from there.
Thank you.
I have a comment question about mask breaks. You said, "Principals will work with staff to create protocols." Is there a reason why we just can't have a universal mask break policy, whether it's five minutes for a class period, whatever it is, so that it's universal and everybody knows what it's supposed to be? Because the way that sounds, it's going to be dependent on the teacher or... It's a little up in the air. If it just, some districts have five minutes at the end of every class period, the mask comes off, whatever it is. But it needs to be universal and not as gray as it appears. And this way, we're all, you know, the kids have to wear the mask, but if they know five minutes before the class period ends, whatever it is, mask comes off, it makes parents feel better, that at least they know that it's happening, and it's easier to track. I mean, plus, if everybody has their mask off and they happen to be within three feet, three mask breaks and they'd be quarantined. So is there a Google Doc that follows the mask breaks from every teacher? Like, how do you track that? If there isn't like a live Google Doc of every day, you wouldn't be able to track that unless every mask break happened outside. Sorry, just my opinion.
No, so you're right, and you advocated both for a universal and against it in that one statement. So I just want to point that out. So the, we've had a lot of conversation with principals and as an administrative team about this specifically. We started with that it would be 50%, Group A and Group B in the classroom would have a mask break. But then what we found is that they were going to be six feet apart, and we don't want the six-feet kids quarantined either. So we're now talking about creating an A group, a B group, and a C group within each classroom, and that A group could take a break, and then when they put theirs back on, B group can... And that A group could take a break and then when they put theirs back on, B group can take a quick break. And that way, there's nobody within even six feet unmasked at the same time, but that they can then rotate that. In terms of them all taking a mask break in the last five minutes of class, that's not gonna work because again, you're gonna very quickly get to 15 minutes. Further than that, the universal policy of, it doesn't quite work because again, just like we have students with individual needs, both academically, socially, and behaviorally, and medically, we also have teachers with individual needs and with medical conditions that we need to be able to address and support. So there are teachers that, due to their medical condition, the students cannot have a mask break while they're with them. So what we have done with that in the past is we make sure that someone comes in to do that. They take the class outside to have a mask break. The next class period, they would get one, so they would never really could go more than one class period without a break. But we are going to have a universal mask policy as much as possible within the limits, within the confines because there is always gonna be a small exception.
I always understand there's an exception. My children were not here last year and I, I'm about guidance, not, and I, I go, I understand both sides of the subject. But it, it just gets harder that it's not as clear because if mask breaks are not clear, guidance are not, you know, it's just not clear. And as a parent, I wanna know when the mask comes off, for how long and what happens. And three different groups in a class period is great, but it, it just, I don't like gray.
Mr. Kamar, did you wanna add, do you wanna add, is there anything I missed in any of those statements?
No, I think all great points and there are two sides to where we sympathize. Wanting the students to have those breaks, I think on the teacher's side of things, one of the things we discussed today too, is that teachers also carry a liability when they're mandated to follow that recommendation or policy. So trying to, trying to juggle that while thinking about how can we get the kids outside? How can we get them to a common area where they can spread out in a, in a bigger space? And I wanna reiterate what Superintendent Haddens said. I, I wanna hear from you if you find that's not happening in your news and we'll have that discussion within the school as well.
Anyone else? Good?
All right. New business, 5.1, confirm tax rolls and authorize tax levy. Can I have a motion to confirm tax rolls and authorize the tax levy as presented? Can I have a motion, please? Mike? Second, John? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 5.2, approve school position agreement. Con, Conia? Pediatric group. A motion to approve the agreement with Dr. Jeff Horowitz as school physician as presented. Have a motion, please. Sue? Second, Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.1, appoint mentors. Can I get a motion to appoint the following teachers as mentors for the 2022 school year? Motion, please. Sue? Second, John? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.2, appoint Ashokin and 3rd grade advisors. Can I get a motion to appoint Ashokin and 3rd grade advisors for the 21, 22 school year as presented? Motion, please. Patty? Second. Mike? Any discussion?
So it, it's funny that you say that because one of the principals this morning, or someone at our admin meeting today said, "What about field trips? Are people gonna ask about field trips?" And I went, "I hope not." But here's my answer if they do. No, so it is our hope to do field trips this year with a focus on field trips that are outdoors. Ashokin is a field trip that is outdoors. So it is our plan to try and do that and, and give the kids that experience. It is the same with DC. When we talk with grade levels and we look at their field trips, there might be less field trips, but I would like to do field trips and have them go explore something outside somewhere as much as possible. So because that is the plan, we're appointing this so that we can plan it and then we have to see kind of what happens with numbers and that kind of thing. Ashokin is a 6th grade field trip every year and then if we don't have enough participants, we usually open it up to 5th graders.
Any more discussion?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.3, appoint club advisors. Can I get a motion to approve the following staff members as club advisors as presented? Motion, please. John? Second. Aaron? Any discussion?
So there is a requirement for clubs to run, they have to meet 25 times in order to be a full club. All staff members that run a club keep attendance. There needs to be at least eight students per club. There are a couple of small club exceptions to that rule. For example, like the All County Band and Chorus, if it exists, we wanna be able to have it. If it doesn't exist, we won't have it. So if it doesn't exist, they don't get this, this stipend doesn't happen. But if it exists, we have it. And if only one student qualifies, we still support them. In terms of the, the regular clubs such as like Fishing or History and Debate or Laker Kids or those kind of things, there is a requirement of meeting, I believe it's 25 times. I'd have to double check and look at that. But again, they have a roster, they take attendance, and we monitor that over the course of the year. And they have to submit that in order to get paid at the end of the year. And sometimes, we do just change a full, full stipend to a half stipend. So it depends on the club and the type of clubs. So for example, the, do we have ski this year? So ski club is something that's winter-specific. Drama club and, and the musical is something that is specific. So just, I, I'm gonna give a very small example. Someone that does the drama club, that has a club that meets in a very concentrated short amount of time, they may run a second club that meets intermittently. So they might meet in September, October, and then meet again in December, January, and then meet at the end of the year because they're busy during that other time. So it really depends on the club and the design of the club. The general intent of clubs, yes, is to have a weekly meeting. But there are certain things that, that interrupt that. Usually not teacher schedules, it's usually student schedules or student events that do that or the fact, other events that take up that time.
Anybody else? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
6.4, appoint full sports soccer coach, Verbowski. Can I get a motion to appoint Terry Verbowski as boys soccer coach as presented? I get a motion, please. Sue? Second. Anyone? Aaron, second. Any discussion on this topic? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.5, appoint webmaster, Pignataro. Can I get a motion to appoint Victor Pignataro as webmaster as presented? Sue? Second, John? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.6, amend bus monitor daily rate, Guzman. A motion to amend the rate of Josephine Guzman bus monitor as presented. Motion, please.
Motion.
Aaron? Second. Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 6.7, revoke appointment. Is that Belasi? Belisi? A motion to revoke the appointment of Mark Belisi as mechanic as presented. Motion, please. Sue? Second. Patty? Any discussion?
I just have a question. Are we gonna have a mechanic till we find a replacement?
That's a good question.
We have a mechanic, it's a second.
So we, we have, we have a, we have a head mechanic. We had a mechanics helper that resigned in the spring. So we were hiring, we have a head, so there's three levels, head mechanic, mechanic, and mechanics helper. We had a mechanics helper that resigned. We were hiring a mechanic in, in order to, we found the person that qualified, first of all, as mechanic because there's different qualifications for the civil service levels, but also as a long-term potential succession plan in that department. With him now leaving, we will be looking for either a mechanics helper or a mechanic again. So we do have a head mechanic there, but it really does need to be two people. When there's a bus up on the lift, you have one person in the bus and another person down below looking under the bus and pressing the brake. There's things that happen, you need two people. So there's things that happen in there and I don't see Ron, I can't throw it to Ron. It's really what I'm trying to do and he must have had to leave, which is totally fine because this was a, I didn't tell him. Yeah, it's really a wrong question. But we are actively looking, so if anyone knows a mechanic or is interested in learning to become a mechanic and wants to be a mechanics helper, we would love to have you. Just call us.
Any more discussion? Any mechanics? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
7.1, enter into executive session upon approval of the motion. Motion to adjourn, adjourn to executive session for the purpose of collective negotiations pursuant to Civil Service Law Article 14 with the Greenwood Lake Teachers Association. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Sue? Second. John? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. There will be no action taken during executive meeting or after.